Okay, you're going.
All right, it's five after nine this morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to Iron County Commission Meeting this tenth day of July. It was a, it was been an awesome few days with the parade and the different events we've had in, in the, in the valley, valleys. We will begin this morning with a prayer offered by John Whitaker, our clerk, and then it will be led in the pledge by Marilyn Wood.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to be gathered this morning. We're grateful for this great land in which we live. We're grateful to be reminded of our, our heritage and the founding of this great land at this, in this, at this season. We're grateful to live in Iron County and we pray that thou will bless our county, that thou will prosper the people that live here and we pray that thou will bless the leaders of the county, that they may make wise decisions and we pray that we can marshal the resources necessary to, to help people when needed and we pray that thou will, that thou will bless us as a people, that we might be more united. We're thankful for the, the good weather. We're thankful for the tremendous water year that we've had. We're thankful for the, to be citizens of this great land and we say it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please follow along the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go to approval of the minutes and those are dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Has everybody read those?
Yep. I would move to approve the minutes for six twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
I would second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And then we need to approve the claims for payment from June twenty-sixth, twenty-three to June ninth, twenty-three.
I'll move for approval of claims for payment from June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three to July ninth of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
They've moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll go to departmental reports. We'll go to our fire folks. Ryan Riddle. Fire warden.
Morning. Thank you. Well, it's been an interesting year. So, uh, from the last time I met with you last year, um, in two thousand twenty-two until this year, I'll, is kind of the period of time that I'll actually do the update for. Um, so last year after July, we had sixty-one fires for thirteen point nine eight acres, um, between July and December. So, of course, the monsoons had kicked in, which was awesome, was great. We continued to kill the forest one, one tree at a time with lightning strikes, but nonetheless, uh, uh, we still had a fair amount of fires, uh, but not a lot of acres, which is, which is great. From December until yesterday, we've had twenty fires for a total acres of twenty-one point six acres. So, we've been extremely busy this year, as I anticipated, once the grass started to, to dry out. I will report, the fourth of July, we did not have any fires in the unincorporated areas of Iron County. We responded to a dozen fires within the Cedar City limits, but outside of, outside of Cedar City itself, in the unincorporated area of the county, um, people were, were really smart this year. They used their fire sense and went into Cedar City and, and lit their fireworks off at the designated areas. So, a big appreciation to the public with the amount of fuel loading that we have, and the amount of escape fires we've already had this year. Uh, big thanks to people being responsible with their fireworks, so. Uh, as far as training goes, um, you can see in the printout I provided you, um, from July last year to current date, we held, um, a basic wildland firefighter course. That's a forty-hour course, which is required for anybody that's responding to a, to a wildland fire in the state of Utah. Um, five participants from Iron County, so that shows our saturation rate. Those were new members that have, that have joined fire departments, um, either at a part-time or a, or a volunteer basis, so. I hate to see that low of a number. We were fifteen to twenty on average, um, before COVID and we're just continuing to see the decline in volunteerism. Advanced firefighter, um, we had eight participants. That's a thirty-two hour course from departments in Iron County. And we do require that they work for a year as a basic before they go to the advanced. So, that number is reflective from what we saw last year with, with new people coming on. And these are just numbers for the fire departments within Iron County. Wildland or wildfire power saws, that's thirty-two hour course. We had four participants from Iron County, um, with that. That's part of the advancement in wildland qualifications. Um, and there's three levels to the saw course. This is the basic level, where a firefighter would learn the, the operation of a chainsaw, felling techniques, as well as maintenance and repair, so. Uh, fire operations in the wildland urban, urban interface, that's a twenty-four hour course. We had ten participants there. Uh, those are, again, people that are advancing with their qualifications, so that's not a bad number. I'm pretty happy to see that. We're, we're getting a lot of training out there. And then our Utah Wildland Fire Engine Training, we held, it's a southwest area event. We held one in Kanab and we held one in Damron Valley this year and we had participants from Iron County Fire Departments in both of those. So, it was really cool to see those guys come out. We hold them in different places throughout, throughout the southwest area and we kind of rotate that year by year. So, we're, we're getting good participation with that out of the fire departments and it's a field exercise where we, we take what we've learned in this, in the classroom and apply it to the field. And then the annual wildland fire refresher, that's a four-hour course and that was delivered to all of the fire departments within Iron County and we had a hundred and thirty-two participants there, so. As far as prevention goes, burn permits, last year, uh, again, from July first to December thirty-first, uh, we issued twenty-three permits for a total acres of three hundred and fifty-six acres that a, a property owner in Iron County would be burning themselves. So, this is agriculture, this is basically any type of private property burns that are in the county. And that, that is awesome. I'm actually surprised that that number wasn't higher with the moisture we had last year, but I don't think people were as prepared as many, maybe they should have been to, uh, to get some of those debris burns done when the conditions allowed it, so. Um, this year, this spring, we issued three hundred and seven permits for a hundred, for a total of a hundred and fifty-three, um, acres burned. So, great numbers there. The permit system is working very good. It's allowing people to burn on the right day versus condensing it, um, down to a one-month period of time like it used to be, so. And I'm happy to say that our escapes have, have dramatically decreased. So, one of our number one causes of wildland fires in Iron County was escaped debris burns, um, and/or fence line burns. These people are still getting it done, but we're not condensing them into a one-month period of time when the wind blows. So, great things are happening there. Continue to work with agricultural and industrial during the closed portions, uh, when we have closures to make sure that they're taken care of. Um, working close with air quality, especially in the winter time to accomplish a lot of this burning, so. CWPP, our Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan, is due for an update. We're currently working on getting that updated right now. Uh, we should have that updated and completed by, uh, December first of this year. Our prevention sign program with, uh, Grant moving under the engineer's office, he's not quite as available to us as, as he has been in the past, but we continue to work on prevention signs so that the public's aware of any, any, uh, burn restrictions and/or, um, information that needs to be posted out there. Uh, that program has been awesome. It's working really well and it's a great partnership to have. We was able to purchase some electronic message boards, uh, for utilization during fire restrictions, as well as when we're doing work along the side of the road for, for our safety, um, in, in prescribed fire and/or fuels mitigation. Uh, we have four of those. They're currently out right now and, again, great asset to the county. And I've made it, made it known to other agencies that those are available if they have needs for them.
How many do we own, Ryan? We have four in the county?
We have four assigned to fire that we purchased through prevention money.
And then how many does county have?
And I believe the county has an additional four. I think the road department has two, the parks department has one, and the sheriff has one.
It's coming really handy.
Emergency manager has one as well.
Okay, so, so maybe five or so?
Yeah, I think four or five.
Those are really handy, aren't they?
They're great. They're awesome. Yep, they're really great. Um, and what I did with ours was I actually assigned one to the Borough Fire Department and one to the Newcastle Fire Department, so they were in the west desert. So, if they have an accident or something, they're close by where they can
get them right out and get them deployed, so. Um, and it's helping me with storage. They don't have, uh, the Cedar, Cedar City has some too. I've noticed theirs out and those aren't ours that are being used in Cedar City.
Cedar City proper has a few. I know Parowan has at least one, maybe two. So, I know Bryanhead, I think, has one or two, so. Yeah, they're, they're priceless and especially if we have an emergency or something, to be able to deploy those out to, to help with traffic control and different things is really helpful to the motoring public, so. We continue to use the landfill billing. On the back of the landfill billing, we're putting a fire prevention message and so we're paying for that billing out of prevention money, which is saving the landfill a little bit of money in, in those mailing costs, so. Again, a great partnership there. It's a great way for us to get information out to folks, um, and look to continue to do that. Utah Summer Games, use, utilize in their jumbo screen, uh, for prevention messages there. Another good, uh, relationship we've got with those folks. Um, and then, of course, using our IT folks for our websites, social medias, and wherever else we can get information out, so. Just given the location we are, we have an influx of people that travel here, so we want to make sure that they're aware of our conditions so that we don't have problems, so. Fuels mitigation, um, we traded over two hundred and fifty acres of private land last year with prescribed fire. Most of that was in large slash piles where people are contracting different entities to come out and they'll build these slash piles and then during the winter time, we work with air quality to, to burn those piles. So, that's an ongoing. Unincorporated subdivisions with that, with, throughout the county, we're, we're supporting them with, uh, chippers and burning piles for them as well. We purchased a mower for the Public Works Department and the Weed Department. Um, so that's a partnership we've got for the roadside mowing. We're seeing a significant decrease in roadside starts when we, when we manage that fuels, those fuels. Working with UDOT to do the same thing along the state highways and it's, it's awesome. When the fuel is cut down, we're, it buys us time to get it, to get a suppression resource out there to get it taken care of, so.
We just have a hard time getting somebody in the tractor.
Yeah.
We're so busy and we have so much going on.
Yeah.
That's the only problem. And we're short on guys, so.
When we're not busy and especially when it dries out a little bit, we try and get on there, but yeah.
It's hard.
Like this time of year, it's, my guys have been on fires every day. They're, they're starting to get kind of beat up, so. Yeah, that's a great partnership and it's just an ongoing, um, thing that we, that we'll just continue to manage the best we can, so. I actually enjoy cruising in the mower. It's kind of fun. It's a break from the monotony. We have ongoing work in Red Canyon. We've got a fuel break we've been working on, um, on, on a piece of private property over there that we continue to, to do work on, as well as others in that area, um, supporting the Five Mile Campground. I'm not exactly sure what we, the final, what we're actually calling that. Is it still Five Mile?
I think we still are. It's Vermillion Cliffs, but it's still Five Mile. That's what all the locals call it.
It's been Five Mile as long as I've known it. Nonetheless, uh, we've, we continue to, to work up there. We had the Masticator up there last, last fall. Um, and then working with, with Parks and Rec and, and those guys with, uh, some of the pile burns. We were successful with that this last year and
They'll pile some more.
More. Yeah, that's awesome. I love it. So, a good little project there. Um, we partnered with, oh, shoot, who did we partner with? I can't even remember now. Anyways, we did eighty acres of mastication and pile burns, um, in Little Creek with the Masticator. That was a great project to, to put that machine to work, um, trading private land. Um, we have planned, um, fuels treatments in Cedar Highlands, Shertz Canyon, Parowan Front, and we're working on, uh, fuels treatment in Bryanhead. Um, that'll be on the north-west corner of Bryanhead, so. What we want to do is tie from the Bryanhead Burn Scar over to Dry Lakes and put in a fuel break in there, so. That's going to be a pretty large project, but, uh, we're starting to get the planning in place and then working with the federal agencies wherever we can to tie projects together between private, state, and federal lands, so. Lot of work going on in the fuels mitigation world. Um, any questions so far? It's a lot. That's why I put it on paper, so you guys can.
That's really cool. How, how do you decide on those big, you know, like, you know, tying the, the burn scar together? I mean, that's a really clever way to have a future fire break because you kind of have natural, naturally have one now.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, a lot of what we do is, is look at what the federal agencies are doing, um, through their NEPA process and the processes, the processes that they have. It's much more cumbersome for them than it is for us. So, anytime we can partner with them and be a neighbor, um, we, we jump on board and do that. What I don't like to see is when you're flying over Iron County, hard lines where fuels breaks are, so we, anytime that we can, we can feather that, we'll do it.
It can seem a little more natural.
So, you'll see some places where the federal land has done a, they've done a fuels project and the, the private line is just solid. And so, you'll see a fuels mitigation project and it looks terrible to me. It doesn't look natural. So, anytime we can work with that private landowner, to create a mosaic on their property as well, to protect them as well as others, we try and do that. So, one of our big targets is, is tied into projects, existing projects that they have, and then utilization of natural barriers. I have, we have a program available to us that, one of the outputs that the program provides is suppression difficulty. So, if it's going to be hard to suppress, that's a place where I want to put emphasis to try and manipulate that fuel so that, number one, we don't have the, the suppression difficulty, and number two, we, uh, we're placing fuel breaks in areas that make sense.
So, up there where there's heavy fuels, that's?
Yeah. Heavy fuels, um, and then we, we take the low-lying fruit anytime we can, so roadside mitigation. Um, where we would have a tactical advantage is places where we're identifying where we can break some of the fuels up. The overloading of fuels in Iron County is tremendous and it's going to be generations before we get a handle on it. So, we're just getting started, um, but nonetheless, there's, there's a lot to go into where we actually do a treatment, so. Great question. Yes, ma'am.
As, as a, a rancher and, and private property owner, those straight lines, we're going to do them. Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Because, because we'll do them right up to our line. Now, if the BLM will, will do a little extra, like you're talking, that's great.
Yeah.
But you can understand why ranchers do that because that gives you the maximum grass that you can.
I agree and I love, I love when private landowners take, take it on themselves and say, "Look, we're going to do something in our land." Because that gives me the, the tools that I need to go to that federal land, um, management agency and say, "Look, this is what's going on on the private side. Let's get something going on your side." And we'll blend those lines on the opposite side. So, anytime private landowners are doing any type of large treatment vegetation management that adjoins federal land, I love it because the partnerships that we have with our federal agencies, um, they get it, they understand it, and it's really cool to go in and say, "Look, let's, let's work together and..."
And actually, they work a lot better with government agencies than, than the private people.
I agree.
Because then, uh, uh, they seem like they don't get sued by the environmentalists.
Yeah, yeah. And I love being an advocate for the private landowner, so.
That's great.
Yeah, we'll continue to, to do those type of projects because we've gotten a lot done in Iron County where it's been that way, where the private landowner says, "Hey, look, I'm doing this," and then we've been able to go and, and build a, a relationship and a partnership and treat some of those federal lands, so. Keep it up. It's awesome.
That is good.
Um, so just real quick, go over some of the grants. So, last year, um, we, we put in for several grants. Um, many of those were declined, but we were able to acquire a hundred and ninety-five thousand in, in grant awards in the second half of two thousand twenty-two. And then in two thousand twenty-three, um, some of those that we reapplied for were granted at just over a million dollars. So, you can see the breakdown. We, we have three, three grants there that we were awarded this year, um, for, one was for a, a water tender, pumper tender for Borough Fire Department. It was, that truck's been ordered. It'll take twenty-eight months to build, so we're going to, we're a couple of years out before we actually see that truck. But, uh, we were awarded, um, for that one. The CDBG grant was awarded for the Newcastle Fire Engine, which was delivered a couple of weeks ago. We're working to get that online, so I, I anticipate that truck will be in service here in the next week or two.
So, that was the one, so the five county in our five county steering, they approved that emergency funding.
Yes.
Which was really a blessing.
Yeah.
And then we just, this, our, the committee I sit on in the state, we had an emergency meeting and approved in that, so.
Yeah, that was, that was a really big deal.
I'm glad everybody cooperated on that.
Very clunky process. It's a frustrating process to go through, but nonetheless, um, that truck is here and we're working to get it in, in service, so.
We're from the government. We're here to help.
Yeah, we're here, we're here to help, that's for sure. And I, and again, I.
The irony is, we have to be perfect in our part, but then.
But they don't.
Oh, it's soup to nuts, man.
Yeah, it's, it's been really tough.
It was as late as last week. They were like, "No, wait a minute. Do you have that?" And I'm like, "We, we sent it to you."
I actually got emails this morning that I think are finally starting to close that out, but last week I was pulling my hair out. I was super frustrated, so. But a lot of people put in a lot of work with that. I know you, you, um, put in a ton, Commissioner Cousins, and again, we really appreciate that and, and the work that was done on the Newcastle Fire Station, so.
We've got new fire chief?
Nope.
In Newcastle?
No, uh, we hired a part-time.
Oh, a part-time guy. Okay.
That'll be shared between Borough and Newcastle to help.
Didn't think.
Yeah, Wayne.
Wayne was ready to go, yeah.
Wayne's still there and Vernon is, is still in place. We just got a, a gentleman in place to kind of help them with, with keeping the, the equipment up to, up to shape and just kind of take some of the workload off of those two. So, it's a, it's a shared position. He started last week, I believe, so.
Oh, good.
I don't even know what year it is anymore, but yeah, we got him in place.
It only took us two years to fill that full, that part-time position.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I, I lose sleep over the lack of volunteerism. We can't even fill full-time positions. Part-time positions are going unfilled. I'm really nervous. The BLM lost three of their engine captains and there is no applicants.
Wow.
They have nobody to, to pull in, so I'm, that's really concerning when people aren't applying for these full-time jobs.
Yeah.
When I, when I started fire back in two thousand two, some of the jobs I was applying for, I had over two thousand people that I was competing with.
Wow.
Now, we don't even have people applying, so that's, it's a concerning trend. And we're seeing that everywhere. I got, I got friends that work in Salt Lake, Las Vegas, and it, we're seeing it everywhere, so.
Well, you gotta be a, you gotta be a little tough to work in the fire and I don't know that
It's, it's, it's really interesting.
Coming up are tough enough.
I mean, some of our favorite restaurants are closing early, completely closing down because they can't get workers. I, I can't figure out what's going on.
More babies.
Something.
Babies.
That too.
Yeah, it's crazy. Um, as far as budget goes, I'm on track. Um, I currently have forty-four point sixty-six, point six-six percent of the budget spent. I do have a couple of large things that are kind of hanging out there still, so I feel good about where I'm at on, on budget. And then just needs and issues, um, we've had the discussion about the new fire operations building with some office space for us. I know that that's kind of, we got to get the jail done first. I, I recognize that. That's, that's one of the things that we have on the table. And then, it's funny, we just talked about the employee retention, um, equipment replacement and long-term planning, so. The fire district study, CIB has yet to get back, to get back with me. That's something we're going to have to work on. I.
What?
I don't get calls, emails.
No way.
So, I kind of put that to the side. I just.
Is that five county?
Yeah. I just can't get.
Say that again. I'm sorry. I answered a text right when you said that.
No, you're fine. Um, the fire district study, the funding from CIB, I can't get.
They said they have money for that and, and we probably ought to do that.
From them. And I kind of had to put it off.
CIB.
Oh, CIB. Oh, I thought you said, I thought it was through, well, five county was going to help us.
CDBG and there's CIB, but CIB's not, I don't have anything to do with CIB.
Yeah, and, and the guy that you told me to reach out to, I just, I can't get anything back from him.
And this was with CIB. Well, let me give you two names.
But it was, but it was five county that, that was, said that, yeah, that they had, that there was money available for that.
It is coming from CIB.
Yes.
So, let me give you two names and numbers, okay? Jerry Taylor is on that board. He's a commissioner in Garfield.
Okay, yeah, I know Jerry.
Uh, Jerry, eight oh one, eight five six, five five six six. And then the other is, um, is Adams from Blanding or Monticello.
Bruce.
Bruce Adams.
Bruce is, he's, he's been the longest on that board. Um, let me see, let me see. They're both awesome. They can get you some answers.
Okay.
Uh, Bruce Adams, four three five, four five nine, thirteen fifty-one. Give them a call and, and see if you can get some answers. They're both on the board.
In fact, um, maybe let's visit offline. I, um, I think I know what might be the problem there. It's, I think we might need to push on. Five County often facilitates the, this kind of a thing and I think we just need to help somebody pick the ball back up, I think, is what we need to do there.
I think.
Get through the hump of fire season and later this, this fall, getting into the end of summer, early fall, hopefully we can pick that up and, and move forward with it. So, I think it's important to, to get the study done.
Yeah, me too.
But it's been, yeah, kind of frustrating that.
Yeah. You don't have anybody calling you back.
Yeah, yeah.
What the heck? They're the ones that were pushing it.
Yeah, they were the ones that came to you, so that was really interesting.
That we talked to about it.
And then I'll just end on the continued support with fuels mitigation, um, prevention and preparedness and just a, a thank you to each and every one of you. The amount of support that we've had is much appreciated. Um, we share a lot of successes from the support that we have, so. I, I was hoping to have my guys here so you could see them. Of course, I've got the two full-time employees that continue to, to work with us. They've been here for a long time, um, which is great. We're, we're seeing some, some great, some great work out of those guys. Um, and then we have three new seasonals that came to us this year that are, that are amazing. I, watching these guys work, a lot of them have some experience from, from the past in fire, but watching these guys work, um, they're very professional and honestly, it looks like guys coming off the truck with five or more years of experience. They're very, very open. They're very friendly. They're very honest and I just appreciate the, the work that they do for, for the citizens and visitors of Iron County and, and much of the support or much of the successes that they have are from the support from you folks and it's much appreciated.
Well, and that trickle was just, again, that trickle was huge, having that additional machine. Just, we, we recharge one point seven billion gallons of water.
Oh, wow, that's awesome. That's awesome.
Fifty-four hundred acre feet and we couldn't have done it without that. We were able to have that there every day to maintain that and get the maximum flow because it was silt up every night.
Yeah, right.
I probably dug three, three, at least three to four feet of solid sandy mud out of that channel every, every morning and, and, and without that trickle sitting there, we couldn't have done that.
Yeah.
Because the flow would go from, I mean, we were getting twenty-five CFS and it would, it would drop down to, you know, fifteen and, and it dropped down to ten if you didn't clean that every day. And so, we were able to maximize that. Having that machine was, it was just huge.
Yeah, that, that thing has been amazing. Um,
Those are great.
I'm not sure if Commissioner Blake shared with you, we had a fire in Borough. Unfortunately, it ended up being a fire fatality, but we used that. But we used that machine to, to move some material around so we could actually get in for suppression. And it's just priceless, the amount of work that we're able to get out of that. The eighty acres that we treated earlier this year, um, that was, that was one, one guy on that machine out there treating that. That would have taken us probably years to complete eighty acres with the staff that I have, so. Uh, it's a great machine. Uh, I know the, the road department's using it, uh, to open up some of the Canary Mountain Road. There's a lot of things going on with that machine outside of just fire mitigation, so again, appreciate the support with, with that and many of the other things, so.
Thing to have for the county.
I was, uh, glad to get to spend a little time with your crew on the fourth, a very little time. We, we got there and we were visiting for just a second. Not ninety seconds later, you got almost two simultaneous calls and
Yeah.
it was great to watch them jump into action and had two trucks kind of staged and it was probably another ninety seconds and they were gone.
Yeah, yeah. John got to see some firsthand stuff there. Um, it was fun. It was cool. I pride myself in staying out of the media, you know. We, we catch ninety-eight percent of our fires at initial attack that nobody even knows about. And we kind of hide in the shadows and the Fourth of July is one of those nights. Cedar City is very busy just lighting their show.
Yeah.
And so we support them with initial attack resources and it was really weird on the Fourth of July because we would have a burst of ignitions and then it'd kind of die down and then we'd have a burst of ignitions. But we were able to, to support Cedar City and jump on those real quick and get them taken care of, so. Um, again, just providing service to the public and those who visit here, so.
It's cool to watch.
Kind of cool to watch. A lot of training goes in to, to make it look as seamless as it is, so.
Okay.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Susan, did you sneak in? Okay, I, I didn't think you were here before I asked, going out of order. How are you?
Hey, Commissioner, good. So Susan Blackner, Iron County Fair. Um, just to let everybody know, if they're not aware, we did change the name of the fairgrounds. It is now called Iron County Event Center. We're trying to put a bigger, you know, throughout that bigger rope to try and garner some stuff, and I think it's kind of working actually. So, um, what we've been doing since about October is we've been doing monthly uh, food truck roundup at the fairgrounds. We currently are just down to a coffee truck that's out there. And we did that just mostly because it was helpful to them, uh, to try and find a place. Um, yeah, they pay us some and it kind of helps maybe pay and defer a little bit of our electric, electrical bill that we accrue, you know, through.
And he keeps an eye out.
He does. He has actually got cameras and it's been very helpful because we've been able to catch at least one person who was doing some brodies. So, uh, and thankful for that. That person's gonna come in and help, uh, put some more, um, what do I want to say? Um, our reserve seating on some of the rest of the bleachers, so we're gonna get that done. Because of the brodie, so anyways. Um, we started doing in May, um, a monthly farmer's market. Uh, back in May, of course, we had our rodeo queen contest, so we have our queen. We're excited about that. In June, we had a bowl and mini bowl NFR qualifier for eighteen and younger. And it was well-attended by those youth, so uh, we were just one of, I imagine there was five of them that were NFR qualifiers, so it's kind of exciting to see this all come together. With our ranch rodeo this year, something that they wanted to try different, uh, our rodeo committee, is they wanted to do a series of three. And so on June twenty-fourth, we had a ranch rodeo. July twenty-ninth, we'll have another ranch rodeo. And then, of course, we'll end with our fair on that Saturday, September second, we'll do the final ranch rodeo. So it's just a, a series of three as qualifiers and stuff. And so, and the people tend to like that, so it's kind of exciting to see that happen. Um, we've had lots of birthdays, we've had lots of reunions, we've had lots of anniversaries. That's not only in the fair building primarily, but we're starting to see them come out into our gazebo. Um, as I mentioned, the gazebo, of course, we took down the little smaller gazebo because already three of the legs were rotted off. So we were able to remove that, get, get it all sodded, and it looks like, you can't even tell.
Can't even tell it wasn't there.
Yeah, you can't even tell. It just looks like grass and that. We've got, uh, three rogue, uh, picnic tables right now, but we'll place them out and around and stuff. And of course, they'll join the group, uh, when the fair comes, uh, where we're gonna place all of them out there at the fairgrounds as well, so. We're kind of excited about that. Um, in August, starting in August, we have our Miss Iron County on the twelfth. We also have our Mud Bog on the twelfth. On the nineteenth is our demolition derby. On the twenty-sixth, something new we're starting is the monster truck. We decided to put some lawnmower races in with that, so. We have our little buckaroo coming up as part of our fair. You know, our September Labor Day weekend and stuff, so it's September thirty-first, or August thirty-first. September first, second, third, and fourth, of course, is our fair. Our PRCA rodeo, I've been in contact with them, making sure that we get them taken care of and stuff. So it's exciting to see all of this start formulating. Um, oh yeah, we're gonna keep the traditional stuff like a fish grab. Yes, we have fish coming in for that. Um, some new things that we've got coming is a cornhole competition, and thank you, Mike, that was a good lead on that one, and he's on top of that. We're gonna put that on the east side of the new, um, bleachers. In the grassy area there, we're gonna just section that off and that'll happen on September second, that morning into early afternoon. And that, so, um, it's, um, to the north of the gazebo, if that gives you kind of a logistical idea. Um, we have IFA coming on and they are gonna do, uh, roping. And we're gonna go into the midway area right in front of the fair building. We're gonna section off an area there, and I guess they have had huge success. Uh, the metal building, the new metal building that we finally got up last year. I'm calling that kind of our ag building. I've got Farm Bureau, I have IFA, and I've got FFA. And they're gonna come on board with some fun projects and such. The new person that USU hire, yeah, hired to take the place of Randall, who was doing our she, um, the wool, the hay competition and stuff. Um, she is continuing it, and so we're excited to see that continue. And we'll figure out where we're gonna kind of put them. We also have, um, the four H STEM program coming on board with us too. And we're gonna place them into the fair building as well. Um, in September is something new that you all should be aware of. It's our OHV jamboree. And that'll be that last weekend, our week of September. Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, I think, right through there, so it's Wednesday through Saturday. Um, we are putting all kinds of blurbs out. We are partnered up with.
Is that again, sorry?
I, it's that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And I think it ends on, so I think it's the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth.
Ends on Saturday, isn't it?
We did that last year, it was fun.
Yeah.
I took my girl.
Yeah, now, you did the one with.
Just the one-day ride.
We do have the county with the fair, and it's on the nineteenth.
That's, that's the what, nineteenth?
The nineteenth. Yeah, and so if you'll just go in and sign up, that would be awesome. Cause they love to see our commissioners at some of this fun stuff that they do and that, so. Um, the particular, the color country, uh, group that comes with us, yeah. They're the ones that, you know, we've partnered up with and it's working really well.
We've got rides that'll go all, all over the county, up on the mountain, out west.
There are fifteen different rides. You only get to go on five each day, but we have fifteen different rides, so. Um, our thing that we've been pushing on that is it's the end of September, so come see the color. You know, and that even the deserts have color, so we're excited about that. Um, we have a craft fair that's coming to us in October. Of course, our PRCA conference in December. Um, to the future, we do have a series of rodeos that are coming. Uh, one is, I think it's in Cedar, no, it's in St. George in May. It's the first part of June in Cedar. And then it comes to us in a few weeks. And so we're a series of three. And so we have a rodeo that's coming to us about the middle part of June. So we've got another rodeo.
Yeah, they did the first one in Cedar. That was the Wendy Wood Memorial, which was.
Which it sounds like they're continuing too.
Yeah.
You know, they're continuing, and that's the one that's the first part.
What was he gonna name the one over here in Parle?
This one's called the Spanish Trail.
Yeah.
The Spanish Trail rodeo. So we're kind of excited. We've, we've got a name of another rodeo that's with us, so it's kind of exciting to see. Um, as far as grants and such, um, we're excited that Mike will be staying with us a little bit longer. He's kind of a guru with these grants, but one of the things we found out was if we do some matching funds, it's hopeful that we will see that barn. That we'll be able to be more year-round rather than just.
He'll get a grant for a study.
Right.
For, for a recreational study for the whole county and, and he'll put that in. That'll be part of it.
Yeah. He's been really quite helpful in guiding as to how this all works. I mean, we've talked to probably, oh, good grief, between Marilyn and I, we've called, I don't know how many different people trying to figure out how we can work this. Um, we have met with several different, um, entities at different meetings, stuff like this, trying to figure out how we can make this work and happen. We do have people who are ready to come on board to help us, you know, make this happen, but we needed more funding to make sure that we were doing it the correct way. You know, this year, you guys were good enough to grant me some money towards some bathrooms and stuff. But knowing that we could probably make this barn work, that's where we thought we'd utilize and get more bathrooms in that scenario. Um, as I say that, um, after seeing the billing after a year of what we pay in power and gas and that, it averages out to like two thousand a month. And that is just the fair building. That's crazy, just crazy, crazy. So, um, I met with Marshall and Evans and they're putting together, and this is what I was kind of hoping I would have to present to you. I met with them a couple of weeks ago and they're still working on it. Um, we're gonna put some LEDs, we'd love some LEDs. Knowing that I had funding for bathrooms, maybe we switch gears and kind of take care of this.
To help with that.
Yeah.
LEDs inside?
LEDs inside.
Inside, possibly some of the outside too, because we do have, we do have those massive.
You know, there's so much more. Usually it'll pay for itself and.
Uh, within a few years, actually, so, yeah, that's what our hope is.
Twice as bright.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah. Um, and the care, I mean, it's, it's just a no-brainer.
Longer lasting and all that.
I wonder too, um, if, uh, maybe some smart thermostats might not be, might pay for themselves.
Already had the guy come out and take a look, and so we are exploring those as well. Because currently, right now, the way it's done is it's inside the kitchen, which isn't a true go of what the building, whoops, excuse me, uh, what the building is doing and stuff. And so that bill has just been erratic. And that, so we're trying to get a handle on it. So we've been talking to all the powers-to-be to try and make sure we're working this out, so it's better. Um, in the future, um, I, currently I'm talking with some people. We look like we have a gun show on the horizon as well. Um, and I'm working out those logistics. I have worked on gun shows before, so I am familiar with what we have to do as far as security and police and all that good stuff, so.
Great.
In a nutshell, we are moving forward, so. Any questions?
Did you, I sent you my write-up. Did you get it?
I, thank you. I got it.
Feel free to edit it however you want.
Okay, I appreciate it. We're gonna probably add our, um, monster trucks in there.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll make sure it looks good.
Good, yeah.
Okay? Anything else?
Awesome.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Blake.
Okay, uh, so we met, um, as a, as a Children's Justice Center, uh, Building Design Committee, uh, after our, after our trip back to North Carolina, uh, we got together with the rest of the committee to talk about the, uh, to incorporate those design changes that we, that we, things that we learned on that trip. We got back and spent, uh, quite a bit of time kind of revamping our plans. Not that big of a deal. We're making some tweaks. Uh, we've also, in that meeting, uh, we met with Josh and Jared from IT to make sure that we were planning on, you know, where, where to put the wires and make sure that we're up to date. Make sure that, that those guys have been involved, and they, and they have been through the whole process, but this was a little bit more intense as far as the, the electronics of the building, uh, we're working on, uh, looking at some different video systems, some of the things out there that are gonna be the best uh, for longevity as well as evidence storage and things like that, so. Uh, that's moving along. Should be to, to set out for bid fairly shortly. Uh, we've all worked on the sheriff's office design and meetings.
A question about the CJC.
Yeah.
Real quick, um, did you get approval to be able to take the monies from the current?
From the hospital?
Yeah.
Still working on it. Sam's, yeah, Sam's.
Still.
Sam's on that, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know where we're at. We keep getting told, oh, we're this close, we're this close.
Yeah. I just wondered, I figured maybe we'd have approval.
Not yet.
I hope we get that.
The ball's in Intermountain's court. I, I mean, they, they keep saying there's not gonna be a problem, but the corporate machine.
Ooh.
Grinding through the corporate machine.
Okay, anyway, thank you.
No, it's, yeah, that, we're, we're encouraged that it shouldn't be a problem, but.
It's not done yet.
It's not done yet, so, but, but Sam's in the middle of that one.
Okay.
So. Um, yeah, Sheriff's Office and Jail Design, uh, we had a weekly meeting. I was sicker than a dog. I was, I was, I was comprehending, but when I, I couldn't speak to it. When, when we meet later this week, I'll, I'll be way more tip of the spear. But yeah, that's, I don't know, that will be an ongoing process for a while. Um, I worked with, uh, George in Emergency Management this week with, uh, Bryanhead Public Safety. Uh, Bryanhead is a black hole of communications, um, especially with the eight hundred megahertz system. Uh, it's, Bryanhead's always been a challenge with radio communication, cell phone communications. Uh, but it was, when it comes to eight hundred megahertz, they're a black hole. There is no eight hundred megahertz service in the area. Um, uh, so George actually met, met with them this last week. Uh, there's some, there's some cell towers up high up on the peak, uh, that if we can get, uh, cooperation there to put some boosters in that area, uh, that should solve the problem. Uh, so George is going to, uh, he feels like he has some budget money in there to, to study that a little bit more, to pay for a, a small study. Uh, work with Theron Heap through Hamilton Communications as well as the cell companies and Bryanhead Public Safety to try and fill in that gap. That's really the biggest gap that we have in communications in Iron County is Bryanhead, Parle and Canyon. Especially, you know, as we move towards the required eight hundred megahertz in two thousand twenty-five, that's gonna be a problem, so. Uh, we've been working on that to try.
West Desert, you're good on?
Um, Ryan can probably speak to that. I'm sure there's some holes, but.
Oh, Hamlin Valley.
As far as populated areas.
We're good. We're good.
Come on down.
Come up.
Come on down.
In Wildland Fire Management, we still use the VHF system, um, in cooperation with the federal agencies. So the federal agencies, even though they're mandating eight hundred megahertz, Wildland Fire is not going that way. So we actually have excellent communications out in Hamlin Valley for wildland operations, um, which is the primary call we have out there. So we're okay. However, when the sheriff's department's out there, um, they don't have great communications on the eight hundred. And so that's something that UCA and the county may be having to look at in the future, so. But, um, yeah.
They got some, they got some repeaters up there to be able to communicate, right?
Yeah, um, on the VHF side, yes. Wildland Fire, we have, we have repeaters kind of all over that, that talk into. kind of all over that, that talk into, into Hamlin Valley. We've, we've got a re, a great repeater out on Mountain Home that works great out in that area. Um, and then it's kind of interesting because we have Bumblebee over here on the Bumblebee Mountain, and we have Mountain Home, and between those two, Wildland Fire is actually covered really well, um, in the Cedar City and West Desert, and then we have, um, Ruds Roost and Blowhard that kind of fill in some of those other gaps. So as far as Wildland Fire operations on the VHF side, we're in great shape. Um, and the reason why Wildland stays with the VHF side is ease of programming as we travel throughout the nation, especially those federal agencies. They can come here, clone their VHF radio in a matter of seconds and be ready to rock and roll. So eight hundred megahertz requires Salt Lake, UCA to do those, that programming, and it's just, it's not as, yeah.
It's a pain.
Easy, so.
Well, and a good, so last week, uh, we had a homicide out in Hamlin Valley. Um, there, no cell service, radio coverage was really spotty. Uh, the, the witness to the homicide, it took him an hour to get out of there to cell service to report it. Uh, so it was, you know, hours response, i- i- it was a SWAT response, uh, you know, multi-agency response with very little to no communication. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, that, communication's always our biggest challenge. I don't know that there's an easy answer for it when we get out into those out.
It isn't, it isn't good out there.
Into those outlying areas, so.
Yeah, there's.
We do the best we can, the, as far as our, you know, as far as our inter-agency cooperation and, and such, you know, as far as where the population's focused, Bryanhead's our, our biggest challenge. So if we can, if we can plug that hole and plug down, you know, SR one forty-three and to bring, and up into Bryanhead, uh, we'll be good. Um, I just, I've only got one other thing. So, uh, Friday and Saturday, uh, there was a legislative event here that was actually, they're multi-sponsored. It was sponsored by, uh, SU, SU Aviation, Shakespeare Economic Development Tourism, Inland Port, BZI Savage, State Home Builders Association. Uh, Water Conservancy District was involved. Uh, they, I, I'm not sure how many legislators they ended up with. I want to say like twenty-seven legislators. Uh, uh, participated in that event. Uh, there was a, a Shakespeare play at a meet and greet thing. I was asked to just welcome them on, on Saturday morning. Uh, there were presentations by each of these, uh, entities, kind of talking about needs of Iron County. Uh, and they, uh, I think the majority of them, if not all of the attendees, got helicopter tours of local infrastructure. So, uh, it, it, it was really well attended and it was really well. Uh, I talked with Don Jersey this morning. Um, he's had about twenty different legislators and other folks reach out to him since then, saying that's one of the best events we've ever been to and we'd like to do it every year. Uh, SU Aviation, uh, was the same. You know, it's, it's really had rave reviews. I think it's just a really good introduction to, to Iron County, to what our, uh, to what our, you know, assets, what our needs, uh, you know, Danny Stewart spoke, Maria spoke. Um, i- i- I, I think it was just a really good event, but I had the opportunity to welcome them and, and say, here's our, here, listen to these people, so, uh, that turned out really well and that's what I've got.
Okay, um, uh, in, uh, on June twenty-ninth, uh, Paul and I met with, we had had some folks reach out to us about trail maintenance coming from Garfield County over the mountain. And, uh, Garfield County has, um, got a full-time guy, a seasonal guy that will, um, that has a cat and he's, and he can do some, some trail maintenance. And when he gets to the Iron County line, we didn't dare have him go any further because we didn't have the okay of the, of the, uh, Forest Service. So we talked with Kevin Wright and he, um, has assured us that they'll work through whatever they need to do to maintain those so that we can, and, uh, we got, uh, Hazard Brown on the phone and, 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 uh, visited with him and he said, I'd, I'd take any direction that I, you know, training, whatever I need to do to, to be able to do this. So I think that's gonna be a really good thing. We'll probably, uh, have to do a MOU with the, uh, Forest Service so that we can, um, have that in place to protect us and protect them. Uh, on the Fourth of July, there was, uh, the wonderful parade that they have in Cedar City. We, um, Susan wanted to, um, get us some, some advertisement for the fair, and so uh, I was able to get a friend to bring his horse and wagon. He had, he had a four up, uh, four horses. It was, it was a beautiful wagon and, and horses. And we was able to, uh, Mike was out of town, I guess, and so Paul and I did that, but.
The Fourth of July's always tricky for me because my wife's birthday's on the third.
Oh, so you have to take her somewhere.
Well, and, and her family every year comes down and does a big lake trip.
Oh, yeah.
Half the time I end up spending the Fourth of July in Overton, which I'm not stoked about.
But you get to do anyway.
And this year we were, we were back and then I, that's, I was sick.
Right.
So we got back and, but I, I.
Was sick.
I was sicker than a dog.
I guess Ken was sick too. Was you guys together?
No.
At the jail meeting, so we, we, like Mike said, we had a, another jail meeting. Um, and I, I ended up having my family reunion, the Peterson family reunion up to Palisades, and that's always a good time. And so that's all I have for the report this time.
Hey, I've got a few things. Um, we continue to work on water issues. Um, I meet often with the Mayor of Cedar City and the Water District to talk about future projects. Uh, we've got another meeting this week. Um, we had a successful, as Marilyn mentioned, is another successful parade. I think it's five years we've been doing this Spirit of Seventy-Six floats. It's a lot of work. We, it's getting a little easier because we've already built them all. We just have to take them apart and store all the stuff and then we need somebody to build us a big building that we can just store them in, and we don't have to take them apart and put them back together every year, but it was a, a real success. We had a.
See, where's Susan?
Building to store us.
Her barn.
We need to plant some more money trees so we can do something like that. Um, I, I can't, I mean, just count, I don't know how many people were at that parade. I, I would imagine ten thousand people.
It's amazing to be in that parade because you really see how many people are in that parade, at that parade.
And I think it's become a, you know, it, it used to be that the parade was, it kind of lost its meaning. It was advertising for businesses and it was just kind of, but, uh, you know, Best Stevenson had the vision to really make it about the birth of our nation, and I think there's, we have a dozen floats now. And with the sound.
Very patriotic.
And the costumes and it's a major production. But it's, um, in fact, I've gotta go take floats apart tonight, so. But it's, uh, it's, it was really, really fun. It's fun to be involved in, in something like that where people come from all over the state, see it. Um, July Jamboree, uh, I'm involved with Rotary. My wife was in charge of signing in all the, all the applicants for the cars. I think she signed up almost four hundred cars this year.
There was so many cars.
Unbelievable.
That's turned into, that's turned into such a, you know, from the beginning when there was a handful of local cars.
Huge.
Till the car show that it is now is amazing.
I couldn't believe how many people.
It went past Hermes.
I mean, you couldn't even go get passed on the road hardly.
No, it was packed.
Clear to the road that turns into State Bank. That's where the, the trucks were parked to block, but it's, it's just, and I mean, Mary had, and she spent, I literally hundreds of hours signing in everybody this year and she did a great job, but it was, uh, you know, it was, it was, it was, it's become a neat thing and between the Independent, Independence Day Parade and the July Jamboree, that's a huge boon to our economy, I think. I think motels are filled and restaurants and I think it's become a really good thing for our economy. Um, I signed a few letters this week. Uh, one was a draft letter in support of the grant for the I fifteen resilience project. Mike put that together. Mike does such a great job putting these letters together. We appreciate him.
Yeah.
And then also I, I signed a letter, uh, comments, uh, for the BLM proposed rule for landscape conservation change. Uh, well, you know, we, we've signed that letter. We also signed a letter, uh, recommending, uh, Commissioner Yardley from Beaver County to serve on the rack board. Uh, we thought he would be a good, a good fit there and, and we supported him from Iron County, so. Um, anyway, that's, that's all I have, so. We'll, uh, go ahead and, and, uh, pause this meeting for maybe a ten-minute break and we'll resume it a quarter after.
Awesome.